For the JDA, we're going to turn it over to the JDA and we'll let you all start it off.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. Good evening. My name's Tanya Glazierbrook and I'm the current Volunteer Chair of the Joint Development Authority. And I'd like to open this discussion with a brief history of what brought us to this point. I know some of you do not like to discuss the 2014 agreement of a previous commission to fund JDA at one mill every year. You know how we feel about it and we know how you feel about it, so we're not going to talk about that tonight. I do want to review a more recent timeline. In April of 2024, after we received word from the commission that once again we have been denied any increase in funding, our board voted unanimously to advise the commission that we needed to get together and find a more effective way to fund the JDA, which is the single economic development arm for Camden County. And a year later, in April 2025, you recommended that we draft a five-year memorandum of understanding to outline a more reasonable funding pattern, and we did so. And we began discussing that document with commissioners, one by one and then two by two, so as not to conflict with any quorum issues. After numerous discussions, we felt we had reached a potential compromise. Not what we wanted, not what you felt comfortable with, but a reasonable compromise. And then the delays to get that agreement on the commission agenda began, and I won't detail them, but the point is, after eight months since our discussions began, we are finally at this stage, which is to consider the prelim for what we hope will be on the agenda at your December 2 meeting. And the long process, we think, represents the fact that we both want to reach a reasonable agreement of funding the JDA at a level that's necessary to attract more economic development to Camden County. As you well know, economic development is one of the top priorities in your strategic plan. And we are the entity that was created to achieve that. It's our job and we take it very seriously. Our board made it clear that this was to be a negotiation between our board and the commission because adequate funding is a board responsibility, not the responsibility of our CEO. During that process, you've asked us to detail success, and we have. You've asked us to detail how we would use additional funds, and we have. We've spent considerable hours explaining the need for shovel-ready product and how expensive it is. Again, I don't need to say it, but I will. Economic development is not an inexpensive undertaking. It requires a serious financial commitment just to compete with other Georgia counties who have already invested millions in their product. We know you have citizens who question our value. We know you need to respond to those, and we think we've given you solid data to do so. But to summarize all that, we've asked our CEO, James Coughlin, to highlight the key elements that you might use in explaining JDA. We've also asked James and his staff to compile what I think you'll find is an interesting chart on some specific dollar figures about the role JDA has already played in helping increase the commercial and industrial tax base in order to reduce the tax strain on homeowners. And following James's presentation, we'd like to come back so that you can hear from my fellow board members, especially those on the MOU committee. And at that point, then, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you. James?
Can you hear me now? Okay. So the board asked me to prepare a presentation tonight. I knew that I'd have a few board members in attendance, but I've got them all. We've got eight board members here. We are short one position, as you know. We've typically got three board members appointed by the county and one from each city. We're short one now from Woodbine, but the eight board members that I deal with on a daily and monthly basis are here, so I appreciate that. All right. Katie, am I pointing this way? Bet this isn't on. Oh. There we go. All right, so as Ms. Glazierbrook mentioned, what the board is seeking is a five-year funding agreement in the form of an intergovernmental agreement or an MOU that would authorize predictable increases that can make budgeting and planning easier for both us and the county. And then setting some, establishing some objective criteria by which those increases could be avoided or curtailed if certain things didn't happen, if certain goals weren't achieved with regard to the county tax digest. I just want to share a few things before we get into this. As Ms. Glazierbrook mentioned, she asked me to share some things, just a few examples of successes and how we contribute to the tax digest. The one there on your left, that's Plug Power. That's the former Merritt tract in the Camden County Industrial Park. So remember, the Camden County Industrial Park is that little property on the west side of 95 at Exit 7, Harriet's Bluff Road. We inherited that. The JDA developed that in the early to mid 90s. The lots in there are very small. They're much smaller than what most companies are seeking. The largest lot, though, was 18.6 acres, and we sold that to Plug Power through a bond-for-title agreement back in 2021. They, we had purchased the property for $250,000. The bond for title with Plug Power called for them to invest 100 million on the site. They have done so. Their current tax value, if you go down to the bolded item there, their current fair market tax value, real and personal property, is $93,689,602. That's an increase to the local tax base of over $93,000. That's a 37,000% increase in the value of that property by locating that one company. Now, so I'll go ahead and clarify that when we do these deals, especially with companies like Plug Power, there's often a give and take. They're under a tax abatement. This is the last year of their 100% tax abatement. In 2026, they go to 50%. In 2027, they go up a little more, up a little more, so that by the time 10 years is over, they're fully on the tax rolls. So that's, that's normal in these type of arrangements. This, the other one there is Parcel E., which is the intersection of Harriet's Bluff Road and Old Still Road. That warehouse property, those of you that drive past there have seen. We initially sold that to a company called YNC Trading for a little over $178,000. They built a 30,000-square-foot warehouse there with refrigerated storage and office space. And if you ever get a chance to go in, it's absolutely beautiful. They ended up getting bought out by another division of their company from North Carolina, but they in turn sold the building. It's currently back on the market for over $3 million, 3.8 to be exact. And the value on the tax rolls is 2.117 million. So again, that's selling a property for 178.5 and it's on the tax rolls for over $2 million. So that's some significant benefit. And those are just a couple of examples. Here's, here's another one, the St. Mary's Commerce Park. Remember, this is the old St. Mary's Airport. Because it was owned by local government for years and years and years, it had zero tax value. It generated no tax value whatsoever. The way the intergovernmental agreement works between us and the City of St. Mary's, we handle all of the upfront expense, the surveys, the wetlands, the geotechnical work, the, you know, recording the plaits, the legals, all of that. We handle that. We sell that property. We pay ourselves back for what we spent doing that, and then we hand over the remainder to the City of St. Mary's because it is their property. Right now, it's gone from zero to over $10 million in tax value on that property. So I'll point out that only two industries have actually built their, have actually come out of the ground with what they're doing there, specialty structural products and griffon lumber and hardware. But, you know, the rest of it has been sold to private entities and they receive no incentives to locate there. So when they start building, they'll pay taxes at the full tax value.
Are there plans to start building there?
Yeah, pigmental, I don't know if you're aware, but the film industry's taken a bit of a hit. They, they say that in '26 they'll do something, but it'll be smaller than what they planned. The State of Georgia's lost a lot of film work in the last year. Marvel left, for example, went to Europe. A few of the bigger studios are, have slowed down. So we're hoping to see it come back, but they're, they plan to develop it slower than they had planned. Fair question. So this is our priority now. We have sold all the property in the Camden County Industrial Park. As y'all know, you know, you travel around, you go to these classes that the state puts on and others put on. Economic development, for the most part, is about being ready when the opportunity comes. It's about having land that's available, the infrastructure in place, road, water, sewer, electric, fiber, gas, all of that stuff in place. You just can't say to somebody, hey, we've got a greenfield piece of property over here and I hope you like it. If you choose to come to Camden, we promise we'll get it developed because that takes years and these companies know that. So it's all about developing product and having it ready. This is our next project. This is the Coastal Georgia Commerce Park. If you get off on Exit 7, head west to, on Harriet's Bluff Road to 17, right where Harriet's Bluff Road intersects 17. Look directly across and that will be a new road going into the Coastal Georgia Commerce Park. Upon completion, this will be a 1,400-acre Grad Select mega site. Grad Select stands for Georgia Ready for Accelerated Development. Select is just at the state's highest level for sites. We will have the first 150 acres under JDA control, so we purchase 50. We've got an option on the next 100. Road, water, and sewer will be in place. We're doing that now. Fiber, gas, and electric are also available. Rail service is there through Genesee and Wyoming Railroad. You know, right now, the rail, it only goes up to Old Jefferson Road, but it does serve that site less than two miles from I-95 between the ports of Jackson Brunswick. This finally, in the entire time I've been here, we've never been competitive with Liberty County, Glen County, McIntosh County, Long County, all the counties up and down the coast who have spent millions over the years developing their sites and, and winning and, and attracting projects. We get a lot of looks, but we've never been ready. This will finally put us on par to compete with those other communities, so we'll be very proud of that. Y'all were kind enough to include us on the SPOLOST list for this, and we appreciate it very much. The $3 million from SPOLOST, it'll be paid out over six years, will help to offset the cost of the road, but it certainly doesn't cover it altogether. And I do make a note there, this will take two years to complete. And when I say two years to complete, I mean just the entrance road coming in off, off of 17, the entrance road coming in to serve that first 50 acres. I had hoped we'd be able to go out for bids in March of this year and start construction, hopefully this summer. The engineers have reminded me, Robbie, I wish I had asked you first, you would have reminded me, that we need to get DOT permitting and that's going to take six to nine months. So it'll take longer than we like, but it will get done. That image that you see there, that's a logo for Coastal Georgia Commerce Park that the board has approved as part of the agreement with the state. They require that if you're going to be a Grad Select site, your site have its own branding, have its own website. It can be connected to our website, but the site itself has to function like its own entity. These are just some of the things I think most people maybe aren't aware of, what goes into developing a project like this long before you actually put a shovel in the dirt. You've got to do all the survey work, obviously, the design and engineering, the civil, the road, the drainage. Get all the federal and state agencies on board, get all your permitting. Plan for how the field dirt's going to be moved. Where are you going to do your borrow pit? Where are you going to raise the site up for stormwater? There's a lot of planning and design work for the improvements that'll happen on US 17 in coordination with the railroad, permitting of a new at-grade rail crossing, all of this environmental work that has to be done. Fortunately, the site already has an existing wetlands permit that's good until 2041, which is one of the things that really attracted us about this site. However, we have to change the phasing of that permit. It had been planned to be phased out differently when it was part of a large PD called the Villages of Kingsland. We do have to go through the process to change that wetlands impact phasing. You've got to do geotech analysis, endangered species survey. They've got to go out there and look for gopher tortoise and indigo snakes. Cultural resource surveys, there's a few cemeteries that border this, this property that have got to be accounted for and marked off. We had to do a brownfield analysis of the entrance site, the former Hutchins tract. So we've entered that site into the brownfield program now. But I think some of that gets overlooked when, oh, the JDA bought this site, so we expect them to just get started. It takes years and a lot of money before you can actually do that. So I wanted to make sure that you guys had an understanding, I shared this with my board, of the sources and uses associated with the money that is allocated to this project. The columns on your left where it says "uses," those are all the things we're going to spend the money on, and obviously over on the other side, those are the sources of that revenue. Y'all can look at that chart yourself, but you'll see that it comes down pretty close to the available funding with what, what's needed that we have to pay for. At each of our board meetings, I'll give my board a public accounting of this money, what's been spent, how much we still have to spend in each category. I do have SPOLOST 9 on there with the $3 million allocation. Again, we're grateful for that. The RSDI grant we're in competition for through the state, that's the Rural Site Development Initiative Grant. We just had our site visit two weeks ago for that, and we feel like we're in a good spot on that. We're very competitive. I do want to say that on the right-hand side, about three-quarters of the way down, you'll see that in FY '27, we will have to allocate another 100,000 from our Product Development Fund to be able to make this work, but we can do that. The SEED Grant, that's the State Economic Infrastructure Development Grant. It's a federal grant that's allocated to the states. The states then distribute those funds, $1 million. We, we do not know for sure that we are going to be awarded that grant, but we've received some positive communication from the agency that manages that. So we think we should be able to, to obtain that. And so what we've done, we've issued a revenue bond that we're paying with our own budget, our line item for our Product Development Fund. And we've also issued another revenue bond that's paid with the SPOLOST revenue. So the way that works is each time a payment is due on that revenue bond, my office manager sends a note to Nancy in your finance department, lets her know that it's time to make the payment. She allocates or transfers SPOLOST revenue to us, then we turn around and make that bond payment. So again, we appreciate your cooperation on that. While we're doing that, so I don't want to make anybody think that just because that's a multi-year project, that the JDA is just going to sit back for a couple of years and not do anything. We'll continue to do all the things we normally do. We'll market public and private sites for businesses of all sizes. We'll finish the St. Mary's Commerce Park. If you haven't had a chance to drive by, please do so on Point Peter Road. And the new road that we've created is called Brick Hill Road. There's a new sign there, a big monument sign. It's beautiful. I was out there with Georgia Power and the Electricians today, working on getting the electricity in place for irrigation and all that. So that's going to get done. Helping potential businesses understand our markets and select sites. What I mean by that, we're the first ones that people call when they're looking to invest in Camden County. And sometimes that's residential developers, sometimes that, companies that want to open a new restaurant. I was on the phone last week with a group that represents a large restaurant group that was looking at a site in Camden County. They want to know the demographics, they want to know the traffic studies, that kind of thing, so they reach out to us. We get the information to them that they need. Assisting the cities with the coordination of their projects, like TADS and CIDs, infrastructure, all that kind of thing. The way that typically works is we spend the upfront money. The cities agree to pay us back as that money comes in through TADS and whatnot. So we've done that with St. Mary's and with Kingsland. We also host the Lucas Center for Entrepreneurship and the Georgia Small Business Development Center at our office and help them put on their, their events. We host a quarterly meeting of the planning directors, administrators, city managers, Camden County schools. They come out. It's good to get them in one room, so they're on the same page, the cities and the county and the school board. And then finally, we're, we're the ones leading the Georgia Fortis Sports Park project. And then finally, we're the ones leading the Georgia Florida Sports Park project as defined in the county strategic plan and approved by the SPOLOST voters. So we're leading that project, working with the city of Kingsland, the Kingsland Development Authority, Camden County, to get that to fruition. That's in the design and engineering stage now. So I guess that's it. Any questions before I sit down and turn it back over?
Thanks, James. Appreciate it.
The Georgia Florida's.
Sports Park?
Yes, yes. What's, you got any kind of timeline on that?
They, did I turn this back on? The design and engineering, we hope to have done by the middle of '26, Q2 of '26. The first steps there are for the private, so this is a public-private partnership, right? The private side has to start their construction first before the TAD bonds will be issued. It's meant to be paid for with a combination of SPOLOST dollars that are, and I want to make it clear that the SPOLOST dollars are only paying for public infrastructure. There's a, I've seen online and Facebook and other places that somehow a private developer's receiving SPOLOST dollars. It's not the case, and that can't be the case, you guys know that. May Creek Road, water, sewer, sidewalks, infrastructure, that's what that's going to, a section of town that would need that anyway. So that's happening now. And then the private developer, we hope, starts development in late '26 on their site to start generating some TAD revenue, so that we can then in turn work with the city of Kingsland to issue TAD bonds. Those TAD bonds will not be a debt of the JDA or the county or the city of Kingsland. They will only be backed up by the TAD revenue that's available. So that makes those bonds not as attractive to the bond market. They all want bonds that are backed by you guys or backed by the city of Kingsland, but when we started this, we made it very clear that those bonds will only be backed by the available TAD revenue.
Since you brought up things that people are seeing online, this was actually asked to me by a constituent, and I really didn't know how to answer. It was kind of concerning. So like, different properties that the Joint Development Authority owns, if you look, if you go back and look at the history, some of them can look concerning. So one example would be Industrial Drive and Old Still Road. The reason it just stands out is because, you know, the county sells it to an individual for $30,000, and then they sell it for 50. They sell it to the Joint Development Authority for 20, who sells, who gives it to SC Novak for $0, but then the Joint Development Authority buys it back again for 60. So we bought it from someone for 20. Oh, sorry, we sold it to someone. It just, it looks very confusing. I just don't understand why we would give it to someone and then buy it back.
Well, first of all, we didn't give any property to Novak. We sold it to Novak and then bought it back from them. We sold Novak the property, they didn't develop it, and after a while, it became clear they weren't going to develop it. We had a stipulation in our agreement that we had the right to purchase the property back from them if they didn't develop it within a certain timeframe, and so we purchased it back.
Okay, and then so like, another example of something very similar to that would be, like, on a commercial drive, it's a port industrial park, I'm not sure which property this is, but the Camden County Joint Development Authority, they, the sale price was $207,600 to Merit Investment, and then we bought it back from Merit for $250,000.
Right, right. Yeah, so Merit bought that property. When I moved here, that property was referred to as the Merit Track. It had been owned by Merit for years. That was a problem with our original industrial park, is the lots were sold off to investors. Merit was an investment group, they never had any plan to build anything, they weren't a company, they weren't representing a company, they were an investment group. They bought it with the intention of flipping it. We bought it so we could sell it to Plug Power. So it was advantageous for us to buy it. As you can see now, it's on the tax rolls for almost $100 million. So it was definitely advantageous for us to do so, but that's something that won't happen again. There'll be covenants in the new industrial park, and there were covenants then in that industrial park that should have prohibited the sale of land for speculative investment.
No, thank you, just because, again, they ask me, and I don't know the answer to that.
It's a fair question. You look at that history and think, why in the world would they sell property to an investor, let them sit on it for years and then have to turn around and buy it back?
Right, so I mean, I think things like that kind of lead to, and the mystique about what the JDA does, you know? Everything has a code name, there's a lot that goes on there.
Right, right. And just, so I know y'all understand this, but so everybody understands this, most of the time, these projects come to us under a code name. Just had a project manager reach out two days ago, and he, you know, goes through the whole project, explains what it is, explains what kind of site they need, and I said, great, what are we calling the project? And he gives me a code name. You know, I'm not allowed to know who the company is early on in the process, I usually don't even know what they do. All I know is they need X number of acres, they need this kind of gallons per day in water and sewer, they need this kind of logistic access, and they do that intentionally. They don't want people in little communities all over the United States researching their company, and the word gets back to their employers, or, excuse me, their employees or their competitors of what they're trying to do. So that's very intentional.
And just last question, what is the balance of your Product Development Fund? The budget, like, what's the balance?
Yeah, yeah, I should lean over to my treasurer and...
Yeah, I wish I'd thought it.
Yeah. We just sunk it down, we just sunk it down pretty far. In order to purchase that 50 acres, we had to draw on our Product Development Budget a lot. I think we ended up putting about $600,000 from our Product Development Budget into that, and we had a little over a million, so we've cut it about in half.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So James, you own the entire 50 acres now?
Right, we own the first 50 acres.
Turn the mic back on, James.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, better? So coming in off 17, we own the former Hutchins Track now, which is eight acres. We own the 50 acres immediately west of that, it's actually northwest, the road will come in and curve northwest. We have an option on the next 100, which is slightly northwest of that. But the entire industrial zoning there originally was 1,400 acres. It's 1,800 acres total, 1,400 after you remove the wetlands, right? So 1,400 acres of uplands. The way the state looks at it, when they called and said, James, what's the largest parcel that you want to market at the new Coastal Georgia Commerce Park? I thought I had to own it. I said, well, I'll just refer to the 50 acres I own. They said, no, what's the largest business or location that you could accommodate there? 1,400 acres. So we're marketing as a 1,400-acre site.
Okay. So the 50-acre purchase came out of the JDA funds?
Right.
What you have in the bank, or what you had in the bank?
What we had in the bank, yeah. We had to clear out quite a few accounts, we drew them down. We didn't draw them down to zero, we tried to leave a little bit in each of our accounts. For those of you that don't know, we try to keep a little bit in each bank in town, do business with each bank in town. But we took our balances down pretty low in the Product Development Account, and we'll build those back up over time, selling property. But that was the design. It was always the design to build that Product Development Account up, and when we get the opportunity to purchase property, to draw on that account.
Okay. This may be a tough question, but any idea what the percentage is of, just say, cold calls, people coming into community, just looking for something versus what comes from Atlanta? Just rough idea.
Yeah.
I don't, I'm not putting you on the spot, but...
What we tend to see on the smaller sites, and when I say smaller sites, I mean the Camden County Industrial Park, sometimes the sites in St. Mary's, at the old airport industrial park, those tend to be folks who, they've been priced out of Florida. They need access to the Florida market, they need access to the Port of Jacksonville, they need access to I-95 or I-10, but they can't afford to expand there anymore, or they can't afford to even locate there. Give you an example, Ciche Water Products, it's an Italian company that just located in the industrial park. They bought eight acres from us, and they've just built their new warehouse and assembly plant there. They're in the process of training staff and doing all that now, and they're already ready to buy what we call their Phase 2. They're going to close on their Phase 2 probably in January and start building that out. They had a location, their only US location was in West Palm Beach, and they just got to a point where they couldn't afford to do business in West Palm Beach. They couldn't expand, they couldn't build what they needed to build, so they just went up 95 and started looking. That's rare, but that's where we see most of these folks that are small. The bigger ones, the ones that are looking for 50 acres, 100 acres, 200 acres, those all come through the state, and they're represented by a site consultant company. We don't ever deal with the company one-on-one, we're dealing with a representative that's been hired to represent them.
So somebody comes into town, say they come to the city of Kingsland, they want to do whatever X is. Kingsland refers them to you because you're the Joint Development Authority.
Correct, that's right.
St. Mary's does the same thing, Woodbine does the same thing, the county does the same thing, so it's all funneled through you.
That's right, yeah. There was a time where that wasn't true, but in 2014, I think everybody got on the same page and agreed to funnel it all through us.
Thank you, James.
All good?
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
What I'd like to do is ask the members of the MOU team that have been working on the MOU for the last eight months, if any of them would like to say anything. I'd like to start with our vice chair, Danny Wheeler, who's from Kingsland.
Good afternoon, my name's Danny Wheeler. Please forgive me, I'm not a good presenter or public speaker, not as good as James, anyway. But there are a few things that I would like to point out for y'all to consider. Our tax base, based off the information that was given during the public comments section a few weeks ago, I think roughly the total appraised value of property in Camden County, and I could be wrong, y'all correct me, is $1.4 billion, give or take. The impact of Plug Power, when all the abatements, or when they're fully taxed, will be nearly 7% of the total tax digest, and that is off of a simple 20-acre track. Question that everybody should consider is, when we have the potential of 1,400 acres, what will that have, what will that do to Camden County's tax digest then? It will be a significant impact, and I think roughly 73% of the tax burden is on homeowners, and that's a number that we have to bring down for everybody. So that's just a couple of things I'd like for y'all to think about and consider.
Thank you, Danny. Next is Rob Baird, our Woodbine representative.
I think I'll be even quicker than Danny was. Good evening. I would just like y'all to consider, I know you have a tough job when you're setting millage rate, and you're making ends meet, and you're balancing a budget. Let us help you. I mean, that's our goal. That's why we are in business, is to increase the tax base of Camden County through industrial and commercial development. Give us the tools that we need to make your job easier. Thank you.
Royce Proctor, I met all of y'all, but first of all, I'd like to thank y'all for those long, drawn-out meetings we did have and discussions about our funding and what we do. But, you know, one thing, this board, I have to really commend this board, that we all, we're very diverse. I mean, we covered just about every aspect of business, from utilities, communications, to security, and private, nonprofit. Danny's in real estate, and Rob even comes from the medical field. So, I mean, we're very diverse. And do we all agree? Nope. When we have meetings, we, sometimes we can beat a horse in the glue. But one thing about it, we are a committed board. We are all looking out for the betterment of Camden County and the taxpayers. We're not, we're not into spending money. I've heard it many times in this board, that if we either, we got to have the money to be efficient. If not, if we don't do an efficient job, we don't need to be a board. But we are charged with that authority and responsibility. We, in '14, the JDA went from mainly just trying to deal with industrial development and attraction, to taking over all economic development in the county, from the cities, that's what that agreement was. To go back to what Chair Glazier said about that history, not to repeat it, but it was all agreed for the funding then. But we, the problem, we keep getting asked this question, how come we don't have a lot of jobs? How come we don't have a big company? Because we don't have a big site. We can't put a big company on a small site. That was one of the drawbacks of the industrial park. That's what you just saw here about this mega site. All the counties around us have mega sites, or most of them, not all. But now, all the ones that are successful do have mega sites. There's no outside developer coming in or even site selectors looking to come to a county that doesn't have land that's already zoned for them to do business. Otherwise, they'd be coming in, buying open land, and being an outsider, and asking, coming to the county about rezoning. That's a big uphill battle. So those are the things we really want y'all to consider, our funding, we need this funding for multiple years, so that, for our budgeting as we see it, and we need it to grow Camden County in a good way, so that we can get this tax burden off of the residents. That's all I have. Anything else?
Thank you, Royce, Rob, and Danny. Sir, we're ready for any other questions you may have.
Anybody got any questions?
Not so much a question, but more of just like a statement and observation. I was at Robbie's Town Hall, was it last week? And this is just my thoughts, I'm not speaking for Robbie, but my observation was the people there don't want, you know, they don't want their taxes to go up, you know, which is their private home, but they also don't want the development, they don't want the development to come in either. They don't want the trucks going on their roads, they don't want to fund these ventures. And so that is really what we're faced with, right? I mean, I would, I see the value in what the JDA does, but it seems like right now there is a, not really a flavor for that type of development in the area. I know we've already started on the Commerce Park. I would think we would have to look at what it would take to, like, bare bones, fund the finalization of that, but I don't think we can go much higher than that.
I understand that concern. I live in St. Mary's, so I hear a lot about, we want no development. But I also know that that's not the majority of people that we talk with, that there are still a number of residents in Camden County who believe that commercial or industrial growth of the right kind will help balance the taxes they pay versus the taxes that would come from that kind of investment. But I think as you look at what funding we need, we do have to make progress on this new park. I mean, that's a commitment we've made. You've made that by agreeing to the bond that we've issued, so I think it's something that we have to, we have to move forward on.
And you can meet those bond payments with your current budget, correct?
We can meet the current bond payment, we can't continue meeting the bond payments.
Talking about new bonds?
Even the bond that we have right now for the Georgia Commerce Park, you know, we can't keep making those bond payments without some infusion of funding.
I think that, personally, I think 73 is a low number. I think it's more like 80 to 85%. And I remember, I was working...
You're talking about the residential tax burden?
Yeah, the difference between the two. But I was working at the paper mill when the Navy Base wanted to come here. That's why I always feel like that you've got to always have a plan to grow, because anything can happen. If our government changes hands, then we could lose a lot in this county. But when they were trying to put the Navy Base in here, that was a place where people went and hunted, you know, and did things like that. But at the paper mill, nobody wanted Navy Base, because their logic was, we've got the mill, as long as we've got the mill, we're okay. So to me, if we can bring this back down to 60-40, at least, as far as, you know, the split between homeowners and industry, so, you know, you guys doing what you're doing is appropriate. The problem, to me, comes in, in the speed of the way things are, and that's government. I always say to buy a... I always say to buy a pencil, you got to write a book, a government book, to buy a pencil. So if, if you guys could, number one, you can't say anything about the land, I get that. You got to have all of these, this secret covering over it, I get that as well. But if there was a way to communicate with the public, just like when I called James this afternoon, asked him to answer some of the questions that were given to us the last meeting, then if the public is informed, and they know what the goal is, exactly what they're doing, or what you guys are doing, then it makes our job a lot easier. And I'm, 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 I'm not against the JDA by any means at all. I think it is the key to the growth of this community. You just, it has to me, be controlled growth, like you're talking about. That property that you're talking about on 17, it's just, it's out there. You're not putting it right across from the high school. You know what I'm saying? So there's, nobody's going to really fight that, because it's, it's out there, and you can use it that way. So that's my opinion on it. If, if you somehow have a plan to get to 60-40, and publish that plan for the 60-40, I think would be appropriate for the community.
Well, you know, Mike, we, we listened to you before, say that we didn't do enough to, about patting ourselves on the back, or telling people what we do. Danny has a column that's probably going to be in the TNG this week as a guest columnist. Rob has coming up with another publication. So I, I think with three staff, there's not a way to, to do that, but the board has stepped in, and we're, we're trying to make a dent in that.
And keep it coming.
Yeah.
Keep it coming.
If I could, when we talk about a plan, so when we look back and you say, have you already taken the bonds? You've already had the bonds issued and-
Yes, we've already purchased the property.
So when, when, when we approved the bonds, when that presentation was made, did we know that your budget wasn't going to be enough to carry it moving forward?
The question that I believe you asked was, could we, could we make that payment in this year and the next year? And the answer was yes.
Because, because now it feels-
The, the question we asked is, can you pay for the bonds out of your budget?
Right.
That was the question.
Right.
Because if you, if we don't give you the increase, and you can't make the bond payments, then we end up having to pay for it either way.
James, go ahead.
That's my understanding of-
No, that's all right. James had made the comment, and that's how I recalled it.
Yeah, I want to clarify that. So yes, we can make the bond payments for, for every bond that we have extended right now. With our current budget. Our, our revenue bond that we issued with our product development funding, that, that draws down from a, a budget line item that we have. And we'll continue, you know, if we continue to receive the, the allocation we receive now, or a little more, we continue to make that same budget allocation for product development funds. And that's a fixed payment, so we'll, we'll be fine there. Sploshed is, is obviously served by splosh, so that revenue's coming from, from the county. I think what Ms. Glazierbrook was referring to, if you remember where I showed up there, that in order to develop the Coastal Georgia Commerce Park, we're going to have to start allocating additional funding. The revenue bond and the splosh bond, the RSDI grant, the seed grant, that's still not enough. The, the cost for doing this kind of thing is just, is way more than I think most people understand. We'll have to put an additional $100,000 in from our FY '27 budget. We'll have to put another $100,000 on top of that from our FY '28 budget. So it's not the bond payments, it's the ability to get the project done. We can make the bond payments.
And because I don't, I didn't see it in here, how much do we need to get the project? What's estimated to get the project done? How much more in additional funds?
So, so total project cost is, is just under $12 million, all right? If we get the RSDI grant and the seed grant through the state and the federal government, the combination of those things with the splosh bond and the other revenue bond that we've, that we've issued, will, will bring us close. They'll bring us to a little over $10 million, and we'll be able to-
In grants?
Pardon me?
In grants. $10 million in grants?
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay.
I'm saying, the revenue bond we've issued, the splosh bond we've issued, the RSDI grant, the seed grant, I think I've listed all the available grants there. But, but they'll take us to about $10.5 million. So over time, we've got to pay for an additional-
$2 million.
One and a half to $2 million to get this done. Now, we've also-
Monthly or like a one-time? That's a lump sum you need to finish this project?
Right, right, exactly.
Monthly or lump sum?
No, I'm sorry. I thought you said it's a lump sum. Yeah, lump sum.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so what we'll look to do is allocate additional funding from our product development line item each, each year for the coming years. So if we had an additional five years, for example, and we could allocate another couple hundred thousand each year, then, then we'll have it paid off. If we get the grants, if we get the grants. And I, I always wanted to add this caveat. If, and you saw this in Bryan County, everybody likes to look at Bryan County and say, well, they got Hyundai, right? They started investing in that site in 2014. In 2022, they landed Hyundai. So for eight years, they invested in that site alongside the state, before they actually landed Hyundai. When Hyundai came to the table, and just the same way as it would be if a big project came to us, we've, several years ago, we had a project, New World. New World turned out to be Toyota. That plant went to North Alabama. Had they chosen us, and I came to you and said, guys, here's the deal. I got a multi-billion dollar project with thousands of employees that wants to locate on that site. We'd move heaven and earth to figure out a way to pay for it. We would figure out a way to give them the land they needed, to deliver the infrastructure they needed, because we could use over 1,000 jobs and that massive infusion into our tax base, right? So we're, we're doing all this to get the property ready to be able to market. I want everybody to understand that if we're in this game and we're serious, and we're really looking for that big project, that, you know, big auto manufacturer, or supplier, or aerospace, or defense manufacturer, that we all want, they may need more than what we've currently budgeted. And we'd have to have some hard conversations about how we pay for it. But every community that's been successful in locating these big projects has had to do just that. Right?
Thing, thing that's important is having the property entitled, ready to go. We, we are pushed over many times, because we don't have the property that people are looking for to come into Camden County. So that's what's, what's important, is having the property ready with the entitlements ready to go. That's what's important.
You got to have the pipes in the ground, really, is what you've got to have.
Yeah, just zoning and everything else.
One other thing, you know, we said in this room a month or so ago about the tax, possible tax increase. And we had plenty of things that were said. One of the recurring things is about nowhere for my family to go to work here. We send them to school, they leave the county. They're not coming back. There's no jobs. My family moved here in 1969 to St. Mary's. My father worked at Gilman Paper, later became a commercial shrimper. I have deep roots in Camden County. When the base came in, I was right there with him, Commissioner Turner. I wasn't crazy about Kings Bay coming in. We lived three miles from it. Got it much bluff. But it came. Did the county change? Absolutely. But just like with the mill, we, we don't want all our eggs in one basket. The more diversified our economy is, the better we are at survival. For someone to come into Camden County, excuse me, that moved to Camden County to say, "I don't want growth," and I'm one of them. But what would happen if the person before we moved here said, "I don't want growth," and we couldn't come here? Do you want to be the last one to move in? You want your family to come back here and build a home and have a job, but you don't want growth? You can't have your cake and eat it too.
Agreed. Anybody else got any more questions?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a, a couple. One is, can you fill us in on the Jacoby issues? What's going on down there? I know there's probably some stuff you can't talk about, but we need to be filled in.
How much do you need?
Uh, well. We want a comfort, what we want is a comfort level that we're not going to be holding the bag in the end. That's really where we're at.
Right. So just so everybody remembers, when we did the deal with Jacoby back in 2021, we issued the bond, revenue bond, loaned a large portion of those bonds to Jacoby Development. And JDI Cumberland Inlet was the LLC that they created specifically for this project, so that they could take down the property, do all the pre-development work, all, all of that. And the, the deal with that was, Jacoby was to make the bond payments that were due twice a year. One interest-only payment due in February, and a principal and interest payment that was due every August. For the first couple of years, he made those payments. He failed to make a payment. He was late in February of '24. He eventually caught up and made that payment. He was very late in August of 2024. And I mean, about 63 days late, which is very late when you're talking about millions of dollars. He eventually made that payment. He borrowed money from another entity and made that payment. The February 2025 payment, he never made. So we initiated the foreclosure process. We were to foreclose right next door here at the county courthouse on May 6th, the morning of May 6th. The night of May 5th, he filed bankruptcy. That started a bankruptcy process. He did it on purpose to buy time, because that immediately put a stay on the, the foreclosure sale. I thought it would have taken over a year to resolve that. We have resolved it as of October 27th. In the U.S. Bankruptcy Court in Atlanta, Mr. Wheeler and Stephen Kenny, local attorney, and myself, went up to the court, and we have put steady pressure on, on Jacoby Development for months through our legal team. And finally got it to a point where he stood up in court and announced that he was selling the property, and would, that sale would fund, and he would pay us off on or before January 5th. And we, you know, a little Ronald Reagan here, we said, "Trust but verify," right? In this case, we said, "Okay, that's great. We approve you selling that property to pay us off, but we want you to sign over the deeds to the property ahead of time. If for some reason, you do not pay us off in full on or before January 5th, we're taking that property." So we got the deeds pre-signed, they're being held in escrow. If we're not paid off by January 5th, we take the deeds to the property, and then we can sell it. I can say this now. I got in trouble for saying this before. I, I came to you guys last year, and I mentioned that there were a lot of other interested developers, right? And they've reached out, and they've expressed interest in buying the property. So that's who we're going to reach back out to, to sell the property. When I said that last time, Jacoby's attorneys got a hold of that, and they argued in court that we were having conversations with other developers, and that was somehow impacting his ability to sell or develop the property. And I said, "What, what are you talking, who, who have we been having conversations with?" And he said, "Well, I, I saw the YouTube video at the county commission meeting, when you said there was other developers who have reached out and expressed interest in the property." Yeah, they're, everybody knows you're circling the drain here. So, yeah, they've reached out and expressed interest. But there's some very significant groups out of Atlanta, three out of Florida, and one out of South Carolina who have expressed interest. If we end up with the property back, we will sell it in pieces or as a whole to pay ourselves back.
And, and how quickly can you do that? Because we'll be responsible for the bond payments while we have it, right?
So as part of this agreement with the court, they required, we asked for, and the court required, that he go ahead and set aside the February payment. So we, we already have that in the bank. And then we have the funds available if we need to, a year from now, or not quite a year from now, next August, to make that payment. We can do that as well. Because you're right, it's, anybody that comes in is going to have a due diligence period, and they're going to want to examine the property. But some of those groups that I mentioned have already sent their engineers down. They've done the calculations. They know how much they're willing to pay. They had even made Jacoby an offer.
So as soon as you have the deed and you're hand-free and clear, they're ready to come down and buy it, right?
Well, I sure hope so. I sure hope so, yeah.
So we're financially secure through February?
We are financially secure, honestly, through all of next year.
Okay, I got you. Yeah, okay. A couple of questions real quick. I know we run out of time, but-
We need to hurry up and take a break before the 6 o'clock meeting, sir.
Okay, I have two questions, but I'll ask one.
Yeah.
Safe time.
Bare bones.
You know, I, I think I know that, and these are not questions I'm asking you. I'm getting feedback from the public about the JDA. So I'm going to pick one of three. Do we have a geographic issue where we're located? We have Glen County north, we have Nassau south. We're kind of stuck in the middle. Does, is that, is that a issue for us? And that's not an easy question to answer, I know, but-
Everything with geography is project-specific, right? So it depends on what the project is looking for. I will say that Glen County, literally having the Port of Brunswick in their backyard, and then all of the counties that surround the Port of Savannah, having that port in their backyard, Liberty, Long, Bryan, certainly Chatham County, they're at a tremendous advantage, right? Because those ports are what drives that economy, for sure. But we, we are conveniently located between the Port of Jacksonville and the Port of Brunswick, close to the Jacksonville International Airport. We've got a large workforce we can draw from. We've got a retiring military workforce, 500 to 600 men and women every year that retire from the base, and a lot of them would like to stay here. So there's a lot of things about our geography that are good, and there's some things about our geography that are a challenge.
Okay, thanks. Don't answer the question, but here's the question. We don't have time for you to answer this question, but what's our biggest weakness?
Lack of product, lack of product.
Okay.
And has been for 15 years.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to take a, a quick break, and we'll be back at 6 o'clock. Thank y'all. Thank y'all. At six o'clock, we need to go ahead and start. We're going to start off with an invocation delivered by Commissioner Jim Goodman and join us for the pledge.
Gentlemen, remove your covers, please. Let us pray. Our Father and our God in heaven, we humble ourselves and come before you with thankful hearts for all that you do for us. Father, we ask you to forgive us of our many sins. We ask that you protect those who protect us, those in uniform here and abroad. Father, we ask that you give us wisdom to deal with the things that we're going to be dealing with tonight. We ask that we do, we ask that you lead us to do the things that you would have us to do. Father, we pray for those who stand in the need of prayer, for illness and infirmities, those who are bereaved. All of these things we ask in thy name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to be understood for all. Roll call, kid.
All commissioners are present.
All right, are there any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we got first and second to adopt the agenda. All in favor? Motion carries. If there's no changes to the minutes from the November 4th regular meeting, public hearing, executive session, can I get a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Actually, there was no executive session. I copied and pasted wrong.
Withdraw the motion, the approval.
All right, if there's no changes to the minutes from the November 4th regular meeting and public hearing, can I get a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
All right, we got a first and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. All right, this brings us to our first presentation. Michael, I can't pronounce your last name, sir.
Iacona, good evening.
All right.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my name is Mike Iacona and I work for a company called CPSM, the Center for Public Safety Management. And we were retained to do a community wildfire protection plan for your county and I have the privilege of being the lead person on that project. I've got a few slides to give you an overview of what the community wildfire protection plan is, what its purpose is, and some recommendations and observations that we had in our evaluation. The CWPP, and I hate using acronyms, but they're throughout our work, so I have to at least advise you as to what that means. But it's the Community Wildfire Protection Plan and basically it's a collaborative planning effort that really focuses on wildfire protection needs, prevention measures, and community preparedness. This is all in the arena of enhanced public safety. The goal here is to reduce fires and to reduce losses from wildfires. The objective of the CWPP, or the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, is multifold. Increase public awareness, to have the public aware that wildfire is a danger and there's things that can be done to minimize or even eliminate that threat. So that's a big part of the effort is public outreach. Mitigation strategies, these are efforts to reduce the potential for hazardous fuel buildup. Typically, this focuses on key infrastructure, values at risk, but that's the initial priority is to reduce that risk in those areas that are most concerning to your public need. Structural ignitability, that's to the particular home, there's techniques that can be done that reduces the ability of homes to ignite in wildfire. Things like the composition of the roof, the types of landscaping, whether the decking is wood or flammable product. There's a number of things and those factors can minimize the amount of loss in wildfire. Strengthening the wildfire response capability, that's your firefighters, forestry, the personnel, public industry that are involved in response when a fire occurs and to enhance their ability to manage that and to manage different scales of fires. What we're seeing across the nation, more so than I like to admit, are these major conflagrations that require thousands of people and tremendous resources to contain. And those are the things that you try to avoid through these mitigation efforts. Collaborations, I was extremely impressed with the level of cooperation that exists in Camden County. The county, the municipalities, forestry, the timber industry, they're all singing off the same sheet of music. It was a pleasure to see that. You don't see that as frequently and to the level that exists in your county. You're very fortunate to have that here and it truly is an attribute. And the last thing is the prioritized activities. You know, part of this plan is look at your biggest problem first, chip away at that and move to the next one. So you create a roadmap as to how to improve overall protection in the community. You know the community profile better than I do. Overall, you're in a good situation, you know, given the level of urbanization, the types of moisture that you have, the humidity, the lack of slope, all those factors, the amount of rainfall, the predominant winds are good. It's good, but it's not the end result. We see climate changing, you've had fires in this area, areas that were never accustomed to wildfires are having them today. And that reality is unfortunate, but it's something that you have to consider. This is a concentration of population throughout the county. Clearly, the south part of the county is where the majority of people are. I put that there because the fires typically follow the people. That's not the case in this county. If you look at where the wildfires are, let me get to that, these are the wildfires, it's a universal distribution, it's not tied to population. And I think the key to that is the primary cause of fire in your county, and that's lightning strikes. I'll show you some, let me go back to this other slide before I jump into the more specifics. You average about 20 wildfires a year. There's more than that when you count the brush fires and grass fires that the individual communities have. But according to the forestry commission's analysis, you've been averaging about 20 wildfires per year for the last 10 years or so. Most of your wildfires are small, seven and a half acres. The total burn area each year has averaged about 120 acres annually. And the size of your county, that's not significant. Typically, it takes seven to eight units, 12 personnel, a multi-agency response to manage these fires. We looked at all the fires that occurred, we looked at how many people were deployed on those fires, how much time they spent on those fires, where they came from, and it indicates the level of cooperation that exists in this county. Forestry plays a critical role in that process, but your city and county departments are instrumental in managing the wildfires. And the key to wildfire management is what they call initial attack. Get that fire early before it has a chance to grow and become more problematic. There's clear seasonal patterns in when your fires occur, primarily in the late winter, early spring, when it's usually your driest timeframe. The primary ignition of fires are lightning and open burning. Open burning including prescribed burns and burns by the public. The predominant fuels, grass and ground foliage, that's another good thing. The fires are not getting up into the top of the trees, which causes them to spread and be more problematic. Again, this is the distribution of wildfires over the 10-year period. This is some of the statistics for each of the years. And clearly, there's a strong correlation between when you're having rain and when you're having drought. When you're having rain, there's fewer fires, there's smaller fires. When you're in drought periods, there's more fires, there's larger fires. The seasonal trend, you could see, May and June have the highest percentage of fires throughout the year. These are the causes of fire. Lightning, almost 60% of your ignitions are a result of lightning strikes, a little less than 30% are escape burns. This was a very interesting slide. This indicates the size of fires and their location. So the red dots are fires over 10 acres. And then just below that are the orange, those are five to 10, less than five, one or less. So the question clearly jumped out, why were those larger fires in that central swath of the county? And we determined or in discussion with some of your officials that most of those are marsh and grass fires that were allowed to burn or were inaccessible and covered a lot more ground. And those areas were the predominant reason for that higher concentration of larger fires. Our key observations in our analysis, first, Georgia Forestry Commission plays a key leadership role. They are, at this point, the glue that keeps the system together. They're a quality organization, they have a lot of depth, and they interact extremely well with your personnel. The cooperation amongst the agencies in this county, first notch. It is top quality and you should be proud of that. The timber industry plays a critical role, I think, in the management of your fires because it's a crop, because it's a cash crop, there's a sensitivity to protect that. And because of the harvesting practices where 25 to 30 years, those timberlands are cut, that reduces your fire threat almost half the time because when it's growing from saplings to full maturity is a period of time where there's a less likelihood for wildfire. So that clear cutting helps the situation. Plus, you've got the management because it's a crop that they want to protect and preserve. The pending growth in this county is an opportunity. You could build into code and zoning criteria activities that help you protect homes from future wildfires. So this is an opportunity to look at those fire ignition factors that could help protect your community as you move forward and growth occurs throughout the county. You have a tremendous emergency management system. Because of your preparedness for hurricanes and weather events, it's so easy to piggyback the wildfire preparedness evacuation preparation process, just as another component of your emergency management outreach, and we highly recommend that. And clearly, you know, the climate is going to affect our area, it's affecting the nation, it's affecting the world. And these situations are not going to be as isolated as they've been in the past. Clearly, there'll be more of them and they'll be impacting your community. In terms of what our recommendations were, really build on that public outreach. I mean, the people are the critical reason why we do this, to protect the people, to protect their properties, to protect their businesses. And there's things that they could do that can help in this process. You need to look at the open burning. You know, there's a philosophy that exists in this county and many rural counties that, you know, we need to burn. Yes, we do need to burn, but when the conditions are bad, when it's dry, when the wind is howling, there should not be burning. There should be restrictions during those periods of time that you have extreme high fire hazard. And we recommend that you look at that, maybe some staged burning options that say, when these conditions occur, there is no burn, or these burns have to take place with some limited exposure size, time of day, things like that. So there are opportunities to curtail some of the starts by restricting them when it's high fire hazard. Again, promoting fire-resistant construction as growth occurs, again, that's money in the bank, that pays dividends time and time again. There's a tremendous need for wildfire training amongst your agencies. Forestry is extremely adept at their ability to manage wildfires. Your organizations are focused primarily on structured firefighting and it's different. It's much different, you use different equipment, you do different tools, you use different command structures. That process needs some embellishment, it needs some improvement. And that's an area that the people that I've been speaking to are eager to undertake. Another positive aspect about your community, they want to do better, they want to learn these techniques, they want to have greater effectiveness in protecting the community. The vehicles, there's only four, five off-road vehicles in this county. Most of the wildland firefighting is being done by dozers and realistically, a combination of off-road vehicles, hand crews, and dozers are needed to manage the larger events. You need to focus on expanding that capability. And look at those key infrastructures that are at risk and focus on them first. It was interesting, we did an assessment of the various responders in terms of what's the highest risk, what's the, your headache, what's your big worry in terms of a wildfire? And not surprisingly... And not surprisingly, the answer was I-95. That a fire impacting I-95 and a closure of I-95 has ripple effects. You've seen it, you know, over the years, but it's vulnerable, because as you drive down the highway, it's, you know, in a canyon of trees. And it doesn't take much for smoke and embers and things like that to obstruct visibility that you have to close the fire. I was the fire chief in Orange County, Florida. And one time, we had a wildfire right at the entranceway of Disney World. And I closed the road. And I received a call from the governor, saying, "You're closing down the road to Disney World?" Unfortunately, I knew the governor at the time, and he says, "Mike, what are you doing? You're killing me," you know? I said, "I'll get it open as soon as I can, Governor, but right now, it's a hazard." But the roadways are critical in wildfire protection. In conclusion, your county-wide systems are extremely proficient, and they're sufficient resources. I was amazed that, on any given day, there's more than 70 people able to respond and 40 different units throughout this county. So you could throw resources at an incident rapidly, and that's key in minimizing wildfire. That's why your wildfire outcomes are as small as they are. You have a lot of resources, and you've got a system that responds rapidly. The technical and training skills need to be improved. Heightened public preparedness and awareness is required. I can't emphasize enough, fire-resistant construction, you know, that's important and that works. It's a passive way to minimize wildfire damage. Your current wildfire risk is low, but the erratic weather patterns that we've been seeing are going to change that. You're going to have wildfire incidents in this community, and, you know, you best take the necessary steps to manage them effectively. That concludes my presentation. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Do y'all encourage controlled burns, prescribed burns?
Absolutely.
I know, historically, we've kind of gotten away from that somewhat in the county. I know we used to do it on our property every year, but we haven't done it in probably 30 or 40 years now.
You know, it's a catch-22. When you do prescribed burns, you get tons of complaints about the smoke. And there's always the health issue of people being impacted by the smoke when their health is compromised in some way. And that's a consideration. You have to choose the right time. It was funny, I was talking with forestry officials today, and this is your time to burn. This is the ideal time to burn, but it's been so dry that they're concerned that those fires would get away, and rightfully so. So you really have to find that window for controlled burns, do the proper notifications, and then get them done quickly.
Anybody else got any questions, comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. It was a pleasure, and I mean this sincerely. It was truly a pleasure working with your people. They're excellent, believe me. Thank you.
All right, our next presentation's going to be our quarterly financial report.
Good evening, commissioners. I'll just wait for the PowerPoint to be put up. So I'm Nancy Clark Gonzalez. I'm the Chief Financial Officer, and this is an overview of the first quarter of fiscal year '26. And I'll start with the general fund. The annual budget for the general fund is $47,807,556. And for the first quarter, the first three months of the fiscal year, that would be July through the end of September, the revenues received were $4.6 million, which was 9.6% of the budget. You can see the second line there, 25, we're at the 25% mark, I should have said that, which would be $11.9 million in revenues. And then, the actual for last year was $3.2 million. And the revenue is small for last year and this year, because the tax bills haven't gone out, and that's a pretty large percent of our revenue budget. So that's expected at this time of the year, because we have not received the taxes. And then, each of the different classifications, you could see property tax is just 0.3%, and that's just representative of the timber vehicle and mobile home, and there's no ad valorem tax in there. Prior year taxes are two and a half months collected, and that's actually a 46%. Sales tax is always one month in arrears, so when I do the report, it's only two months collected, but that's at 16.5%. So that's really on mark. Service charges are almost 20%. And of that, EMS billings makes up 25, is at 25%, and the EMS billings make up most of that revenue. And then, of course, the courts are at almost 17%, and that's two months collected, because they are also one month in arrears. I'm sorry about that. Okay, so these are the expenditures for the general fund. The mid-year, again, is the $11.9 million, 25%. The actual for the first three months is $12.5 million, which is 26.2%. And for last year, it was just about the same, $12.5 million, which was 26.3% of the budget. The general government is higher than the expected 25%. It's at 31.8%, and that's predominantly from, there's insurance policies that get paid in full at the beginning of the year. There's some contracted services that need to be paid at the beginning of the year. So that usually skews it a bit. Public safety is at 24.1% of budget, of their budget. The courts are at 21.9% of their expenditure budget, and public works is at 26.9% of their budget. And this is the revenues, again, the $4.6 million, expenditures 2.5. So that leaves a deficit of $7.9 million. And last year at this time, it was $9.2 million. It was significantly more. This year, we did receive the CDS, the Congressional Direct Spending Grant, in July, so that had increased our revenues by that amount from last year. So that makes up what that difference is. These are expenditures, and it's different classifications of the expenditures, the salary and benefits. From last year to this year, increased by 7.7%. That's mostly from the across-the-board increases, increases in, there was a few new positions this year. And there's also been significant overtime in the sheriff's office and also EMS in the sheriff's office and EMS. It's both from vacancies, and I know that they're both working very hard on that. EMS has a class starting, I believe, in January. So hopefully, some of that overtime will be reduced once that class graduates. Employee health, this is mostly health claims, that has gone down by 3%. And really, that's just kind of the luck of the draw on, it's just a fluctuation through different years on what actual claims are. We can't really control that, because we're actually, we're self-insured, and we're paying for the claims through our carrier. Contracted services, an increase of 24%. A lot of that is the increases in software maintenance, and that's also an annual, sometimes you have to pay that at the beginning of the fiscal year. Also, it's, there's several grants that were paid this year, and they're being expensed to contracted services. And it's also telephone and travel. Supplies and materials, that went up 9%. That's electric vehicle supplies, office supplies, so that is just an increase for the quarter. Insurance, property, vehicle, and equipment, those insurances, that actually went down just a little bit this year for the first quarter. I think overall, for the year, it will be an increase, but for the first quarter, it showed a minor decrease. Transfers out, these are just money that the general fund sends or transfers to another fund. It's transferred to the 911 fund, because that needs supplement, and also the capital improvement fund. It's no big deal. That difference there just means that, so far this year, I've transferred less than I did last year. Intergovernmental EMS write-offs, that's a reduction, most of that is a reduction in the EMS write-offs in the first quarter. Capital costs, there's not a lot that gets capitalized through the general fund, and it's actually pretty similar to last year. But usually, it's tracked in other funds' capital costs. And the Medicare adjustments, again, that's just a reduction that all has to do with EMS collections for ambulance services. So overall, the increase is 0.5% if you combine all those classifications. This is curbside collections. This is the trash collection. Their fiscal year budget is $1,756,653. The revenues are right on target at 24.5%, at $429,000. Expenditures are just under target at 23%, and that's $404,000. The difference is, they're in the black at $25,000, and similar to last year at this time of year. The next item is the emergent, this is the E-911 fund. Their budget for the year is $1.8 million. The revenues are $250,979, which is only 13.8% of the budget. This is actually in arrears by two months. So what that $250,000 reflects is just one month of collections, and then also, I had to transfer in about $150,000, which is just a portion of what was budgeted. You could see that we budgeted almost $600,000 that the general fund has to supplement the emergency telephone budget. And the expenditures are right on target at $454,000. And that leaves a difference of a negative 203, similar to last year, a negative $239,000. The next fund is the unincorporated service district. That budget is just over, slightly over, at $4 million. The revenue collections are only $254,000 so far. The predominant revenue in this fund is from taxes, which we know haven't gone out, and also the insurance premiums tax, which we did not receive until October. So at this point, at the third quarter, or the first quarter ending, it's only at 6% of budget. The expenditures are almost 1.8 million, 44% of budget. And that's so high, because we've already either purchased or encumbered equipment for fire of almost $1 million, and also public works of $141,000. And we're budgeted to use $660,000 in this fund. The next fund is the solid waste fund, and the budget for fiscal year '26 is $4,959,732. The revenues for the first quarter is at 23.3%, which is 1.1 million. And that is restated from the original quarterly report I had sent you maybe about a week ago. I've provided another copy for you with that correction, and I'll be putting that up on the website. Hopefully, it'll be there tomorrow morning. So this is a restated amount. So that is at 23% of budget. Expenditures are at $1.6 million, or 32% of budget. And the CND revenue, which is mostly what the revenue is made of, is at 23.7% of budget. And this is also budgeted to use $159,000 this year in fund balance. And of course, we have reserve for closure. We have to keep money set aside for when each cell closes, because there's maintenance on that for years and years and years. And right now, we have $7,68,000 in reserve for closure. We want to work towards, over the next couple of years, building that up, because we have had two new cells open. And as that happens, we have to eventually close cells, and we want to make sure we have the maintenance for that. And at this point, we've always funded any kind of closure costs through just normal operations. So we've never had to go into that. The next one is Two Rivers, and I'm presenting it as a separate fund, but that is just for transparency and clarity. I track it in my books as a separate fund, but at the beginning of this fiscal year, the board did decide to make that part of a government fund. And I believe, I'm working with the auditors right now, that may be reported as part of the general fund in the fiscal year '25 financials. But I will always track it separately, so that it just doesn't get, the revenues are very clear, and all the expenditures are very clear. So the revenues are at $57,483, which is almost 20% of budget, and expenditures are almost identical at $56,813. We showed a small profit for the quarter. Unfortunately, I did have to do an adjustment in October, which did bring that down back into the negative. I think, this morning, I checked it, and it's showing a loss of $10,000, but that's a very large improvement over fiscal year '25. At this time, it was a loss of $33,000. So the expenditures and revenues are coming in line. This slide is for SPOS 8, which concluded on June 30, 2025. The total collections was $69,149,699. And this is a list of the county-wide projects, and that totals $38 million so far. The cities and the PSA, that last item, they're fully funded at this point. That was $30 million. We've just started some work on the public safety complex, the 911 EMA Center. You can see that was $10,400. The public health facility is finished, and the other items are listed as well. There, I don't believe there's been much change in that over the last year. And these are the county projects, which are for SPOS 8. And at the very, it shows the different details, and summarized by like technology, vehicles, et cetera. But bottom line, it comes down to, on the road projects, we have about $1.2 million left for SPOS 8. Under building renovations, we have $2,256,825, and I believe most of that is going to the fleet facility. Vehicles, technology, and equipment is showing that it's over what we had budgeted by almost a million, but we do have interest earnings, which has covered that cost. So overall total, the remaining balance for just the county projects is $2,477,662. And this has nothing to do with any kind of funds that we received over the $55 million. This is just our county, what we had in the referendum and how we spent the money. And on SPOS 9, the actual collections to date are only two months' worth of collections. And that's $2,332,748. And the two expenditures have been, this is the county-wide projects on SPOS 9. So the county ambulances, we've encumbered, which means we've issued a PO and we've ordered one county ambulance. And then also, distributions to the cities and the PSA have totaled $744,000. And these are the county projects, and I believe I also added this detail to the report that you have in front of you. So what we've spent so far is just, we've ordered the vehicles for the sheriff's office of $677,000. And on your report, I believe, I probably only have heavy machinery and equipment listed of $11,165. Typically, the way I do the reporting for SPOS is on a cash basis. I don't report the encumbrances, but I wanted it to be clear when I'm doing this presentation that you are aware of the sheriff's office vehicles being ordered. And then, there's also the ARPA fund. And back in 2021, we had received $10,618,231. We've expended almost all of it. We have $1,48,700 to still expend, and I know that that's really small, and I can't make it bigger, but I will tell you what they are. The items that make that up are sheriff's office vehicles. There's leased vehicles, and we have that much remaining, which is about $421,000. And all of this has to be expended by December 31, 2026. Some HVAC of $75,000, and I believe that was Some HVAC of $75,000, and I believe that was actually spent in, paid for in October. So that's closed at this point. A chassis for EMS of $372,000 and some body and car cameras for the sheriff's office of about $115,000. So those, and also the soccer complex, there's a contract with Thomas &amp; Hutton. And as of the end of September, we had $65,000 remaining on it. I did just receive a few more invoices, so that number will change on your next report. And that totals the $1,480,000 that we still need to expend. And the list on this presentation is only the items over $100,000. In your month, or in your quarterly report, it's a list of all the expenditures. And that concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Nancy. Anybody got any questions for Nancy?
I was just going to ask, so what is it that we've started for the public, the E911 EMA Center? What is it we did spend the $10,000 on?
I don't have that, I don't have that information with me. I could get that for you and let you know tomorrow morning.
Yes, ma'am. And then a question about the SPLAST 9 collections and dispersments. My understanding is that we had to collect for the Level 1 projects first before other dispersments happened?
The way, the way the referendum was structured is that each month, we allocate 55% of that month's collection to the countywide projects. And the remainder goes to the dispersments to the cities and to the PSA to spend how they'd like.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
All right, this brings us to our first public comments section of the night. We'll limit it to agenda items only in three minutes. Any registered speakers?
Yes, sir. Mr. Ricky Manning.
Well, there was a couple items, but I'm just going to test on one of them. We're back here with number six, rescheduled on that work session for a new five-stand at Two Rivers. Y'all put that work session off? I'd suggest continuing to put it off. We have, if you've got any information on, I have not yet defined any. What's it going to cost us in personnel? Every time we dangle a little shiny object in front of this board, y'all jump on it. We don't know what it's going to cost us to maintain a five-stand, how many personnel it's going to take. I've seen no information on none of this, and I don't think none of y'all have. That might need to be questioned in the work session by one of y'all five to find out what we're getting into. I mean, we're getting in all kinds of stuff and we don't ever look at the longevity, what it costs the taxpayers, what's it going to cost us in the cleanup of that range? Y'all know that's coming. It's got a lifespan. Somebody's going to clean up that lid, just like you're going to take care of that landfill. You are not building a contingency fund. She just corrected it and you've lost $10,000 again in the quarter. This thing ain't going to make money. But it can break, even if it can be a good range. But you've got to bring it into compliance first instead of expanding. You're expanding, you're adding more personnel to the county government, and you're still not in compliance. You know it. If you don't, you done admitted at one time with the building illegally. That's why you changed the zoning. Don't look at me like that, Mr. Chairman. You'd have wanted to approve the contract to build the range out of compliance, out of zoning compliance, out of noise compliance, and you knew it. You made the motion, one of your first things as a commissioner in 2017. It's all right here. So let's correct our mistakes. You're fixing to shut down a park to correct a mistake that this board made putting in mulch. And now you're going to correct it by adding more money to it to put a shade over it, which is nothing wrong with that. But correct your other mistakes, too. Admit you made a mistake, just like you did with the park, and correct it. That's all I've been asking for over three years. I'm tired of asking. You know you're wrong. The county knows you're wrong. The people know you're wrong. So let's, let's correct it during the work session. Thank you.
Anybody else register? Anybody else wish to speak for the public, for the board? Come on up, sir.
Mr. Gregory? I have him for the second public comment section.
Yes.
I have you for the second public comments section.
Is it an agenda item you want to speak on?
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yes, sir. I'll call your name at the next section. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. This brings us to our first agenda item.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I come forward tonight requesting your support in an employer acceptance agreement with Coastal Pines Technical College for their paramedic apprenticeship program. This agreement will allow us to continue a successful partnership with Coastal Pines Technical College, who has provided many of our employees with EMS and paramedic education over the last several years. Currently, we have three employees enrolled in their paramedic program, and we have an additional six employees. They'll be attending their upcoming paramedic program in January. This partnership has proven to be successful, and we'd appreciate your support for making Camden County Fire Rescue a paramedic apprenticeship program partner with Coastal Pines. If you've got any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Can I get a motion on this item?
Make a motion to approve the agreement with Coastal Pines Technical College for paramedic apprenticeship.
Second.
All right, we got a first and second to approve the employer acceptance agreement with the Coastal Pines Technical College. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good evening again. The next agenda item is the approval to purchase two Lucas chest compression devices and eight AEDs for EMS using opioid settlement funds. And Camden County is currently a participant in the national opioid cases in the U.S. multi-district litigation based in Ohio. And the Lucas devices and AEDs are eligible for use of opioid settlement funds. The Lucas devices are to be assigned to two ambulances that currently lack them, and the AEDs will be assigned to three ambulances, a battalion chief's truck, and four administrative vehicles. The equipment to be purchased from Stryker, a sole-source company. And there's a letter from Chief Smith requesting this purchase. If you'd like me to read it, I will. It's in your packet. Would you like me to read it?
Sure.
Okay. Dear Chairman Casey, I am writing to respectfully request the approval to allocate a portion of the Camden County's opioid settlement funds toward the purchase of critical life-saving equipment that will directly support our frontline personnel in responding to opioid-related emergencies. As you are aware, the opioid epidemic continues to have a devastating impact across our nation, and the Camden County is no exception. While these settlement funds provide a valuable opportunity to invest in long-term prevention, treatment, and recovery efforts, it is equally important to ensure that our first responders are properly equipped to address the immediate life-threatening consequences of opioid overdoses. At this time, Camden County Fire Rescue is seeking to utilize opioid settlement funds for the following equipment: two Lucas device, chest compression devices, and eight automatic external defibrillators, which are AEDs. These tools are essential to improving patient outcomes during cardiac and respiratory emergencies, which are often associated with opioid overdoses. By providing our personnel with this equipment, we are giving our community members the best possible chance at survival and recovery. I urge the commission to support this request and help ensure that Camden County is prepared to respond effectively to the continuing opioid crisis using proven life-saving tools. I've included the quote for the requested equipment and would be happy to answer any questions you or the board may have. And thank you, Chief Terry Smith. So we're requesting approval of that purchase.
All right, I'll make a motion. We approve this item.
Second.
First and second to approve the purchase of the two Lucas devices and the eight AEDs. Any discussion?
I definitely want to, but I do have a question.
Yes.
I see that the total on this expense on this out of the opioid settlement fund is $63,689.
Yes.
I know the following item is also coming from the opioid settlement fund, but when I look at the budget that we approved, we only have $65,000 out of the opioid fund budgeted. So my question is, what is the balance of the total balance of the fund?
The fund balance in the opioid fund right now is $276,318.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, the state was giving us money as well. Am I correct? Not necessarily for this, but for education and prevention?
I'm not aware of that.
I know last year, remember, we gave 40 grand to the drug court out of that money? What, what money is that?
Yes, last year, we did have an MOU with drug court, and it was, I believe it was about $59,000. And that's why I put the $65,000 in the budget this year. I thought it was going to be renewed, but they're still working on, you know, working on a proposal, and we're just going ahead with purchases that we need.
So is this going to require a budget amendment later on down the road?
If it's the only item that I had budgeted there, yes, because I always want my budget to exceed my expenditures. So I would have to look at it to see if there was anything else budgeted. It's, it's not a detrimental thing to amend
Do a budget amendment.
A county budget. It's very common, you know, at the point of preparing a budget, when we were, when I prepared the proposal, because I would do the opioid one when I did that, it was just having the drug court in mind because there were no other options or ideas at that point to expend. Unfortunately, it's not enough to do anything big, but we want to certainly utilize it in a manner that helps
The best way we can, absolutely.
The absolute best way we can to help opioid-addicted individuals.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders.
That $276,000, that's after the 63?
No, that's before.
It's before it? Okay, so you got $200,000. I know at one point, we were dealing with mental health and one of them being the 30% inmates that the sheriff has that are, have some issues with mental health. I'd just like food for thought for us to think about, seeing if we could reduce our inmate population by getting these folks the help that they actually need. So that's just a comment. I like that idea, Martin.
All right, any other discussion? I know other counties are doing this same, same stuff, sir.
Yes, sir.
Because they've got the same problems we have. If there's no any further discussion, all in favor? Motion carries.
So the next item for your approval is to purchase two Autopulse NXT resuscitation systems for the sheriff's office for the jail and marine patrol using opioid settlement funds. It's, it's a piece of equipment very similar to the Lucas devices. It's the same but different. This is $43,000, and it's also eligible for opioid settlement money. They would be used in the jail and on marine patrol. It's purchased from Zoll, a sole-source company. And I do have a letter from Sheriff Cheney, if you'd like me to read that as well.
Might as well.
All right, dear chairman, I am writing respectfully to request the approval to allocate a portion of the Camden County's opioid settlement funds toward the purchase of critical life-saving equipment that will directly support both our jail division and marine patrol personnel in responding to opioid-related emergencies. The opioid crisis continues to impact our county, and our personnel regularly respond to overdoses, both in custody and in the community. While the settlement funds support prevention and recovery, it is equally important to be equipped to address these immediate life-threatening emergencies. At this time, the Camden County Sheriff's Office is seeking to utilize opioid settlement funds for the following equipment, which is the two Autopulse resuscitation systems. And they've included a quote for the requested device, and the investment will enhance the sheriff's office ability to save lives and ensure the safest, most effective response to opioid-related incidents. Thank you for your continued support of the Camden County Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Kevin Chaney.
Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
I'll make a motion. We approve the purchase of the two Autopulse NXT recitation systems.
Second.
We got a first and a second to approve the purchase. Any discussion?
It brings us down to about 150 now, right? Close to 150?
176, about 175.
Okay. This, this is a question for, for either one of you two gentlemen. Is the Autopulse NXT resuscitation system similar to the Lucas?
Yes.
Okay, is there, I saw the Lucas was like $1,000 less online. I didn't know if there was a reason why we went with the NXT for the sheriff's office versus the Lucas.
The devices themselves are. The devices themselves are very similar. The fire department, we already have the Lucas device in place and on four, or excuse me, six of them are already in place, and we needed two additional ones for
Oh, no, yeah, yeah, yeah.
With the Lucas device. So the sheriff elected to go with the Autopulse. He can answer as to why they, they selected that, but come on up.
Sorry to put you in the hot seat, Sheriff.
It's just a different device versus Lucas. Lucas is a little bit more advanced than this device here.
Okay.
And it helps us out though on the waterways a little bit better and inside the jail put this thing on somebody a little bit quicker.
Okay, yeah, fair enough. I was just, again, curious. Thank you.
So Sheriff, you're more comfortable with, with this one? Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, you back up, Nancy.
Okay. The next budget, or next agenda item are budget amendments for the fiscal year '25 budget, and hopefully this will be the last amendment to the '25 budget because we're close, probably the middle of December, we'll have the audit completed. So I just wanted to explain the reason for the adjustments. The capital lease for the sheriff's office and body car cameras is recorded as an expense in the ARPA fund. And although the county elected the revenue loss option with ARPA several years ago, we continue to track these expenses in a separate ARPA fund. I didn't transfer out the entire amount that we elected as revenue loss. I left it in the ARPA fund. Just to maintain clarity for the single audit and to ensure that there's proper segregation of those expenses when I have to prepare a U.S. Treasury submission. And at the end of the lease, an accounting entry is made in accordance with the Government Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 87, and, which is leases, and the GAS, we call it GASB 96 for SUBITAS, which are lots of acronyms, subscription-based information technology arrangements. And what I have to do is reclassify expenses for vehicles and other equipment that are leased to principal and interest, and we look at that at the year end. And in consulting with our auditors, Malden and Jenkins, these costs are more appropriately recorded in the Capital Improvement Fund. So according to the budget amendment, include a transfer, we're going to transfer that money out of ARPA over to the Capital Improvement Fund and then establish a budget for these expenses on the Capital Improvement Budget. So we're requesting approval of those budget amendments.
All right, can I get a motion on this item? All right, I'll make a motion. We approve this budget amendment.
Second.
We got a first and a second to approve the fiscal year 2025 budget amendments. Any discussion?
Just another question.
Yes.
So it is still ARPA money? It's just being recategorized?
Yes, it was, it was ARPA.
I can sure. Someone asked me earlier today, and I'm like, I'm pretty sure.
Yes, it's ARPA money.
Awesome. And then these expenses, was I in office when these were made? Or these last year? Because it's the fiscal year '24, '25.
These are for
I just want to know if I can actually vote on this.
Right, right, right. The money, the transfer out of the ARPA fund is for sheriff's office vehicles, what we consider round number three. Round one was through Enterprise, through SPLAST. Round two was purchased by ARPA. And then round three is continued as a lease through ARPA. So that's what I'm actually transferring out to the Capital Improvement Fund.
I guess were those decisions made before January or after January of this year?
The purchase, we received some vehicles in June of 2024 and the remainder of the vehicles in July, I believe, and August of 2024. No, we received everything in 2024.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor? Those opposed? Or you abstained? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Nancy. All right, this brings us to, next item is the 2026 regular meeting and holiday calendar. We've all had a chance to, you wanna say something about that, Katie?
No, no, sir.
I was just ready, Katie.
Wanted me to.
Okay. We've had a, all had a chance to look at that. I'll make a motion we approve this calendar. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, we got a first and a second to approve the calendar for 2026. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. All right, this is the rescheduling of the work session regarding the five stand at Two Rivers Gun Range.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we reschedule the work session regarding the five stand at Two Rivers Gun Range to December 2nd at 6:00 p.m., following the work session at 5:00 p.m. on the same date.
What was our work session at 5:00 p.m. on that day?
I'm just looking at the calendar.
We had it tentatively scheduled for the jail and animal control, but, I mean, it's a lot of topics, so it's up to y'all.
Might we postpone the jail and have the five stand at, at that time?
I'd like to amend my motion for that.
Well, you
I think that's great.
Go ahead and state that.
Sorry. I'd like to amend my motion. Well, I didn't, we didn't get a second. Do I need? I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
And then I would like to make a motion, I move to reschedule the 5 o'clock work session for the jail and animal control and instead make it the five-stand work session. And we'll just reschedule the jail and animal control at a later date.
All right, do we have a second on that? I'll second that. All right, and this is to
Yes, sir, a lot of words to get to.
Swap out the five stand with the jail on, what date was that?
December 7th.
2nd?
Yes, sir.
All right, any discussion? All in favor? All right, that meeting's set. All right, this brings us to calendar. Katie?
Okay, on the calendar in your packet, I accidentally stated that we were having a regular meeting on December 2nd at 6:00 p.m., but that was just a copy and paste error, and that is just the work session at, at 5:00 o'clock.
5:00.
Yes. And then there is not an additional Thanksgiving luncheon in December. That was also a copy and paster.
Okay. All right, and that work session is gonna be on the five stand on December 2nd?
Yes, sir, and I'll change that and send that out tomorrow.
All right. County administrator comments?
I have no comments, Chairman. Thank you.
All right, this brings us to our final public comment section of the night. We'll limit it to three minutes. Anybody register, Katie?
Yes, sir. Mr. David Gregory.
My name is David Gregory. I live on Maryfield Plantation Road in White Oak and I'm bringing, I'd like to submit, if I can, a petition to Camden County Board of Commissioners regarding urgent maintenance and safety improvements to Maryfield Plantation Road. "We, we, the underside residents of Maryfield Plantation Road, property owners in the surrounding area, and other frequent users of this county-maintained roadway, including guests, construction crews, school bus passengers, mail carriers, private delivery personnel, hunters, and members of the general public, hereby petition the board for immediate action to address the hazards, hazardous conditions of Maryfield Plantation Road. Maryfield Plantation Road is one of the oldest public roads in Camden County, providing essential access to homes, businesses, and recreational areas. Despite its historical significance and heavy daily use, the road has fallen into a state of disrepair that now poses serious safety risks to all who travel it. The grounds for our petition, one, severe deterioration due to the lack of maintenance and improper maintenance and overuse. The road's surface has become severely compromised due to prolonged neglect and appropriate grading practices and excessive wear from heavy logging trucks. Deep potholes, ruts, and gouges now dominate the roadway, creating dangerous driving conditions. Documented incidents of vehicles leaving the roadway. Multiple vehicles have veered off the road or sustained damage as a result of deep potholes and deep gouges caused by county maintenance graders. These incidents endanger lives, damage property, and increase liability for the county. Critical community lifeline, Maryfield Plantation Road serves as a diverse, essential, essential user base, including daily, daily residents and their guests, construction and service contractors, Camden County school buses, transportation, transporting students, the United States postal service, private delivery vehicles, UPS, FedEx, Amazon, et cetera, hunting, hunters accessing adjacent timberlands, emergency responders, and utility crews. Failure to maintain this vital artery disrupts commerce, education, public safety, and quality of life. I could go into detail further. There is one, one, one area that we'd like to just mention. Historical resurfing, resurfacing of potash and associated public health, safety risks. Many years ago, the county resurfaced Maryfield Plantation Road using potash, also known as wood ash, fly ash, from coal combustion
Your time's up, sir. But if you give that to Katie, we'll make it part of our record.
Okay.
And I believe we've got a plan to start working on that road.
We do, yeah.
You wanna address that, Rod?
The public works is planning on getting in the first of the year to do significant work on removing the ash, replacing it. So it's already scheduled.
Okay, oh, really? Okay, I was, I was told that and I've spoken to several supervisors over the years, but I've never, never been told that we're, it actually had a plan for it, but
It's bubbling to the surface.
What's that?
It's bubbling to the surface.
Okay, okay. Well, appreciate it. I, I certainly recommend anybody who has a question, take a ride down the road because it won't take very long to, to determine whether it needs some work or not, so. Thank you.
All right, anybody else register, Katie? All right, anybody else wish to speak for the board?
Timothy Bassett, Woodbine. Just want to make a comment on the opioid situation, the funds there. I'm all for having these devices and the things that we need to prevent death, but there's been little said about prevention and education. And I believe though, the funds that we have for the opioids, if we can find a way to channel those funds to maybe some nonprofit organization or something to educate people on the opioid crisis that we have in Camden County and do something to prevent it before we get to the situation where we have to use these devices, I think that would be more feasible and more wise when it comes down to these funds. And also, the Drug Court, I know last year, there was funds allocated to, to the Drug Court. Are we have any data to support actually how Drug Court is actually working? Is, when we, we're giving money to, to Drug Court and I don't see any data supporting just how it's benefiting the ones that's going through Drug Court. So my thing is, the opioid funds, I think that education and prevention would be more feasible for using those, using those funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mary Beckman, I live in District 3. I have one question and then a set of comments. The question is, are you going to then reschedule the jail complex work session? I hope that that will be soon. And the comments have to do with the things that were said during and after the presentation by the JDA. I was a bit astonished to, first of all, hear the NIMBY, the, we want growth but not in my backyard. That's understandable. But then in that context, I heard the claim that the new Coastal Georgia Commerce Park was not in anybody's backyard, when in fact, it's in the same backyard to the old, the historic Kinlaw neighborhood that the Camden, the Camden Industrial Park is too. So these, this is, you've already built one park there and now you're planning to build another huge park there without getting any input from that neighborhood. And in that context, I was disturbed to hear that there was no plans to talk about what effect that that was going to have on the roads there. We've now got the new warehouses that you're trying to put in on one end, the QTR warehouses, and on the other hand, this new Commerce Park. And the road between them that connects it to I-95, that goes right past an elementary school. So is it just the high school that you're worried about? It doesn't matter if the elementary school kids are gonna have to walk out and have these trucks running past? And I also was disturbed to hear Mr. Coughlin say that, oh, there are some cemeteries neighboring on the Commerce Park. There's a cemetery right in the center of where they're planning to make that Commerce Park. I hope that you address your responsibilities to protect that cemetery.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak for the board? All right, seeing none, can we get a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Chairman, I moved to adjourn this minute.
Got a first and a second for adjournment? All in favor? Thank y'all.